Of the young fifteen-year-old that lost his life this weekend in Chester County due to a violent, violent shooting. We ask that you put your hand over our county and our city and watch over the parents and the children and show them that you are the way and that if we put our trust in you, we can't go wrong. Bees and all the things, asking your son, Jesus' name. I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Guy.
Okay. Okay, moving along to number three on the agenda, the approval of minutes. Under A, May the sixth, twenty twenty-four, council meeting. Need a motion on that.
I move that we approve the April fifteenth.
April the sixth.
April the sixth. May the sixth. May the sixth minutes. There we go. I was looking at all the agenda.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Okay, under B, May the seventh, twenty twenty-four, budget workshop minutes. Need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the May seventh budget workshop minutes.
All right, need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion with everyone at that meeting?
Except me.
You, you wasn't there?
No, sir.
Okay, so everybody voted except Mr. Killian on that. So if no more discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All except Mr. Killian, public. Thank you. Okay, under citizens comments, we have, I think we have one on the agenda tonight, Mr. John Massey. Come forward.
John Massey, one seventy-one, East Laces Street, Chester. I'm here once again to ask county council to support a twenty-first century first responder and veterans tribute memorial. Goal of Chester County's finest, those who have served, would be to archive the personal histories of our first responders and veterans, present their stories in a way that encourages every generation to learn more about their contributions to our city, county, state, and country. Email received recently about this with respect and gratitude to the sender who shares these thoughts. The main concern is that we really need memorials to be administered by those organizations that are already in place. Relying on school, school groups, even exceptional students, to maintain and upgrade over the years is also a concern. A memorial to our veterans or law enforcement might be a really good project for the suspended sales tax that will be coming back in about three years. End email, high school days, in place of waiting three years for funding, and then only maybe allow the young people to run things end of twenty twenty-four and beyond. Allow them a chance to prove themselves, allow them the opportunity to talk with these outside of their own parents, the best of role models, get to know Chester County's finest and each other better. Safeguards, their parents, teachers, first responders and veterans need only guide and mentor them along the way on how to handle this. Do this while allowing them the freedom to have their own input. Youth and enthusiasm are desperately needed if this is to survive. Oftentimes, the simplest way of handling things, the least expensive ideas turn out to be the best, especially so when they come from the heart. Closing what's in this bag. This is a working model of actual memorial. Placed it on that table out there earlier this evening, took some photos, and from this you can access the hundreds of veterans and first responders information that we already have in two groups on Facebook. Costs less than five hundred dollars with what I had. Allow me one day to prove it, what this is capable of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Okay, moving along to public hearings, we have done no public hearings tonight, but moving to number six on the agenda, ordinance resolutions and proclamations. Under A, the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash eleven, Chester County Physical Year twenty twenty-four dash twenty, twenty-five budget ordinance to establish the operating and capital budgets for operation of the county government of Chester County, South Carolina, for the physical year commenced in July the first, twenty twenty-four, and to provide for the levy of taxes, taxes for Chester County for the physical year commenced in July the first, twenty twenty-four, and to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, to provide for the payment of the sums borrowed by the county governing body, and to provide for the payment of tort claims and workman compensation claims against Chester County, and to provide for certain physical and other matters relating to county government. Need a motion on that.
I make a motion, the council approved the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Comments on that? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Okay, under B, the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash twelve, entitled only, in accordance with amending and restarting ordinance of twenty sixteen enacted April the eighteenth of twenty sixteen, and authorizing the insurance of general obligation bonds in one or more series, six tax exempt or taxable in the amount not to exceed the lesser of the annual aggregate. Number one is two million, five hundred thousand dollars. Two, and number two, the available, available debt limit of the county for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and rehabilitating various capital projects, authorizing the county administrator to prescribe in the form and details of the bonds, providing for the payment of the bonds and the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds, providing for borrowing and anticipation of insurance of the bonds and other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I move that we approve the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash twelve, entitled only.
All right.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments on that?
Yes, for the sake of the public, can our administrator just put in more simpler terms what this, what this reading is and explain it so that it's understandable and understandable?
Yes, sir, Mr. Guy, thank you. This is just taking an ordinance that's already in place and we're cleaning it up. This is the ordinance that gives us authority to create a resolution each year for capital borrowing, and all we are doing is changing form of government, the wording in it from the previous form of government of supervisor to the county administrator. Simply a clean up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
One question. What is, it says. Wait. What is the available debt limit?
So if you're talking about our capacity currently.
I mean, the county has bonded indebtedness, is that what you're talking about, Mr. Darby?
Well, this technique, you can come on up, Mr. Darby, and you can speak to it. If you're talking about what our current bonding capacity is, this really is two different things, but I can talk to our current bonding capacity.
Yes, so I think in the ordinance, it speaks to the lesser of the two point five or the available debt. So right now, I think we're around five million, so obviously, we would only borrow the two point five. I think that's in place in case our debt limit got below two point five, we wouldn't borrow more than, than what was available.
If I remember, eight percent of the, eight percent is as high as we can go with the bonded indebtedness. Is that not true?
That's right.
So this is under the eight percent.
Yeah, so our, yeah, absolutely. So I think our eight percent would be around seven or eight million, and we have about five million available.
And this really, following up, Mr. Hester, it really hasn't changed year to year. Our goal is actually lower in this number each year.
Yeah, that's what he just said. The bonded indebtedness limit by state law is eight percent, that you can't go above that unless the citizens vote on it. So if we're under that, then we're, we're fine. That's all I was asking.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Hear none? All in favor? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Okay, moving along to C. It's a reading. Let's see here, I'll get ahead of myself. See, let's see, on the C is the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, entitled only, an ordinance revoking resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, declaring a pause to further residential subdivision or planned developments in limited areas of the county, invoking the pending ordinance doctrine and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
All right, and second?
Second.
Second, got a motion, a second. Any questions or comments on that?
I think it'd be helpful if we had Mr. Hester speak to this.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wilson. So this ordinance, what we're doing basically with six C is we are revoking the resolution that was put in place at the beginning or the end of last year, going into the beginning of this, this year, putting a pause on planned developments and rezoning in that Lewisville School District area, that defined area. And so what we're doing is we're revoking the resolution and we are invoking an ordinance declaring basically a moratorium in the area, or the same pause and the same boundaries, and we're extending that three months into March, the end of March of twenty twenty-five. So I know everybody's question is probably, well, why is that going on? So as everyone knows, we had a planning workshop, and then, of course, we got, we sort of stopped that process because we were going into budget season and starting the budget workshops. Out of that last planning workshop, there was a discussion and a consensus that we would move forward looking for a planner for Chester County. And I'd given several, several options of how we could proceed forward. I gave an option of how we could pay that, or pay for that position with no impact to our budget, and council had given me the authority to move forward with that. So the goal here is to extend that timeframe, put it into an ordinance as opposed to a resolution. I'll talk about why that is, but what the goal really is here is to get this planner hired. It's in this budget that you guys just voted for the first reading on, and that planner position is in that budget. And so the goal is to get that planner and let them get in to the position, get us, get them hired, get them into the position, and give them the time to do the things that we outlined, that we want them to take a look at and do for us. And I think that's fair, given our situation, that there's no way, by the time we get that position hired, get them in place, we're going to be running out of time on this. The reason to go from a resolution to an ordinance is, is really simple because the resolution is sort of policy and procedures where the ordinance gives us, it's a little more legally binding, it's a lot more legally binding than a resolution is to us. So to give us that time and to ensure that we take the steps that we promised the citizens we were going to take.
That's good. Any further comments or questions? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Okay, this is a resolution here. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash four, providing for changes to the county employee personnel handbook relating to maternal leave and employees' conduct, discipline, and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash four.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
Got a second for Mr. Guy. Any comments or question on that?
I think, again, it'd be helpful to have Mr. Hester speak to that.
All righty.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So the maternity leave policy is a new policy that we're requesting to add to our employee handbook, and what that policy does, and I'll try to be brief in the explanation, but it allows new, mothers of newborn babies to have six weeks paid leave when that baby is born. It also allows for an adoption under the age of eighteen, and there's some parameters, it can't be the adoption of a spouse's child, but the adoption of a new child under the age of eighteen and fostering as well, there's six months paid leave. And so this is something that we wanted to add, you know, a non-financial, and let me explain that in just a minute, but a non-financial, non-impact to our budget benefit to our employees. And we've added several of those that we've discussed in those budget workshops. This one just needed to go into manual and come for a resolution. But when a mother takes leave after the birth of a child, they already have, whether they're unpaid or whether they burn their vacation time, we don't budget that absence into our, our budget. We don't know who's having a baby or who's not having a baby that year. So it's not a plan for thing. We plan to pay all year long for every position that we have. So from a financial standpoint, the only, there, there is no real impact of having, having to pay more money. Those, those individuals are going to be out of work, whether it's through FMLA or whatever, and this is something that the state has adopted recently. It's also something that other counties in South Carolina have started to adopt, and it's just another benefit that we can offer to our employees that, that doesn't hit our bottom line necessarily. So any questions on the maternity leave, then I'll move to the other change. Nothing on that? Then I'll move to the only other change, and you guys have that in front of you. Has to do with our discipline policy, and it's just a simple change in wording on our steps of discipline, taken out, that some things were worded as a verbal warning, a written warning, and we actually just changed those from a counseling to a written reprimand and so forth and so on. Just made it clear that the only person that could terminate or demote would be myself, the county administrator as well. So we just kind of cleaned up some things, just as I told you all that we would probably do throughout the year with our policies, and this was just one of them. We wanted to go ahead and get on the books.
All righty. Any further comments or questions for Mr. Hester? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to E, resolution, again, for twenty twenty-four dash five, providing preliminary approval pursuant to Title Twelve, Chapter forty-four of the Code of Laws of South Carolina of nineteen seventy-six as amended, for the execution and deliver of a fee and lieu and ad valorem taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Chester County, South Carolina, and a company identified for the time being as Project P twenty-two eighty-five, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates of the other project companies collectively being the company, providing for a fee and lieu and ad valorem taxes incentives, providing for a special source revenue credit, and creating or modifying a joint county industrial and business park agreement between Chester County and York County so as to establish or enlarge the park and other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I move the council approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash five.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mosley. Any questions or comments on that? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Thank you. Okay, moving along to another resolution for twenty twenty-four dash six, directing the county administrator to provide a copy of the county organizational charts to county council as part of the county annual budget process and provided for other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash six.
And a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guy. Any questions or comments? I believe Mr. Hester wants to say something on that.
Please, Mr. Chairman, just let me explain that resolution real quick so everybody's clear on it. What the resolution does, it allows for the change of organizational charts by myself as the administrator, not only at budget time. So what it allows is, it allows for, right now, the, the organizational charts are approved with the budget once a year, and so this resolution will continue that, but it'll allow me to approve changes to organizational charts throughout the year as long as there is no impact to the budget. And so, good example of that is, two would be when Jesse and Animal Control had the part-time positions that actually were a brilliant idea, and it took a full-time position, took two part-time positions with no impact to the budget, to make a change like that without having to come before council. Something increases efficiency, operation, no budget impact. Sheriff's Office tends to have a lot more changes. He may move somebody from law enforcement over to detention or nine-one-one around, and so, again, for efficiency's sake, as long as there's no budget impact, this would only require us coming before councils with organizational charts once a year.
All right. Any further comment or question on that? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Okay, moving right along to number seven, is Mr. Hester the administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have quite a few things tonight, but first, I'd like to just say that my, May nineteenth to May twenty-fifth, this week, is National EMS Week. It's usually the third week in May, and we recognize and appreciate all of our emergency medical service personnel. Thank you to them, thank you to those in the community who have also chosen to recognize our EMS personnel through Mills and other, other signs of their appreciation during this week, and we thank, thank our citizens for their generosity, and we thank our EMS personnel all throughout the county for their service. Number two, we did not have a meeting last week, and so we didn't have the ability to recognize, and just, I think it's appropriate for us to recognize that last week was Law Enforcement National Police Week, and typically during National Police Week, we recognize all of the fallen officers nationally, and there's a service that's always held in Washington, DC that does that, and I know the Sheriff's Office did some events last week for their, their deputies in the city. Police Department did some services or some other activities as well to recognize, but I think it's appropriate that we, we recognize our, our law enforcement personnel, their service, and especially those who have given ultimate sacrifice. Unfortunately, in my twenty-eight, you all right? Twenty-eight years, I've had to go to Washington, DC three times for people very close to me, so we recognize them. Also received word from Congressman Norman's office this past week, and they were able to make some progress with South Carolina DOT on the entrance to Commerce Drive off of Highway Nine that's been in question, and we've had so much trouble with, that the patchwork has been done on. And the information that we got from Congressman Norman's office is that DOT will begin work on that in October of this year, and so let's please pass that word along to everyone that I know will be extremely happy about that moving forward. Along the same lines, oh, I'm sorry, back up just a minute, the EMS, we took delivery May the ninth of our new, one of our new ambulances, our EMS trucks, and hopefully everyone saw the post that was, was on our Facebook regarding that. So we, the next one, Kell, will be two years from now, on our three-year wait for our, our EMS trucks. I'd like to say thank you also to our State Representative, Randy Ligon. It looks as though that we're, from the information I've received, that we're going to get five hundred thousand dollars for our Westchester addition for an ambulance bay at our Westchester Fire Station. Those monies should come around October, and I know Mr. Hayes has already started working with Mr. Benson on the drawings and the plans and, and to move that forward. Now, the information from Mr. Ligon is that we got five hundred thousand this year, we actually asked for a million, and there's a potential we'll get the other five hundred thousand next year. So we're trying to design our plans, do it in phases to at least get the bay for the one EMS truck and the sleeping quarters within that, that amount of money that we're allotted. I also understand that our delegation was able to get two million dollars dedicated towards the sewer tie-in to Rock Hill, and we know that there was a little bit of a shortfall, and there was some funds that were out there. I understand also that the federal funds came through as well, so I was told that two million would go this year, and then possibly another two million would be allocated to that next year. We did not receive any funds that we requested for our probate court this year, and we'll just continue to reapply for that and hopefully receive some funds next year. But that would be to renovate our federal building downtown and relocate probate court there. I think that'd do two great things, to give them a nice space, it'll also help bring some traffic to downtown, which would be needed as well. And then the last bit of information, good news, is we have hired a new full-time in-house county attorney, and I'd like to announce that Nicole Workman will begin on June the twenty-fourth, and she will work right here out of the Roddy Building. She comes to us from the solicitor's office where she has worked for the last eight years as a solicitor for Randy Newman, and she is recently, her last assignment is deputy solicitor in Lancaster. Nicole and her family live right here in Chester County, so we can't wait to get her on board and get her started by June twenty-fourth, so we'll make sure she's here and welcome her when that, when that July first meeting comes. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my administrator's report. Thank you.
Can I, can I mention one thing?
Sure.
About EMS and police and fire. I was in Anderson County a few weeks ago, and they have a really nice memorial for their police and fallen firefighters and EMS that have been killed in the line of duty. Lancaster County has somewhat similar, I saw it in the paper. Mr. Massey gets up and says stuff, and then he leaves, and you can't ever catch him up with him. But that would be something I think Mr. Benson might be interested in looking at in Anderson. It's not very much money, but it is, it's a very nice thing, right in front of their courthouse and everything, and it's two actual little monuments, and, and it'd be pretty neat for us to have something like that here for the guys and the ladies that have lost their lives in the line of duty.
All righty. Any further comment on the report? Thank you, Mr. Hester, for that comprehensive report.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good. Moving right along to number eight, we got A, B, and C for the consent resolution on the agenda, not resolution, but an ordinance, and that's A, B, and C under number eight, number eight on the agenda. I'd like a motion on that, please.
I'll, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda for items eight A, eight B, and eight C.
A second.
Second, got a motion, a second. Any comments or concerns on that? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
None, let's vote. Thank you. All right, on the old business, consideration of retail strategy consulting services agreement. Mr. Robert Long, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council. I've had the pleasure to discuss this opportunity with Retail Strategies, which is a consulting firm that specializes in helping community attract retail to their communities. Based on the feedback at the last meeting, we have updated the proposal from them to do the entire county, which is sixty thousand dollars, and to answer a couple of the questions is, one, you know, there is still an out clause, so we, with a thirty days notice, we can break that, so after the first year, if we would like to, don't feel like we're getting good results, so you do have the ability to break that contract with notice. They also will be providing quarterly reports, I know that was another question people had, so in, if we want a special report for some reason, like, say, hey, six weeks out from the end of the first year, we can make that request and get that as well to have a chance to look at and review, and make that decision if council would like to continue that relationship with Retail Strategies. They will be doing all the research and analytics within the first hundred days, and when they complete those, those reports. those, those reports, that is our intellectual property, and it's our intellectual property, so we can do with it as we wish. And they do strongly encourage us to share that information with the local business community, because there may be opportunities that are basically discovered in that, as far as where there are some gaps, and where there are some needs in our community, where there may be some entrepreneurs in our community that would like to basically fill that gap and open that business, and based upon that data. But the intellectual property is ours to do as we wish, and they strongly do encourage us to share that with, basically with the local business community. Obviously, they will, would be our agent, as well as they attend various national conferences to also promote us. And a lot of those are franchise opportunities. And one of the things they did say is, they can also play matchmaking in those cases there. So, if you have a local entrepreneur, and there's an opportunity in a gap, they can also provide introductions to those various franchises as well. And there may be an opportunity to go from that direction, too. But I think this is a very exciting opportunity and a step for Chester County, particularly with the rooftops that are now coming to our community. And as we've mentioned before, our Chester Development Association has agreed to pay for a third of the cost. So, $60,000, obviously, the county commitment is 40. The CDA would pay $20,000 for that cost. And this, we recommend that this does come from the 4% pot of economic development funds. Every time we do a fee and lieu, that particular pot of funds, I believe, still has over $400,000 in it at the moment. So, there's more than enough funds to fund this particular study. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions or comments? Here none? Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you very much, Council.
All right, moving along to number 10.
Mr. Chairman, we would be looking for a motion to approve that.
Oh, we're gonna need to approve that?
Yes, sir.
All right. We need a motion for the consideration of Retail Strategies Consulting Service for the total amount of $60,000, which $40,000 would be burdened by the county and $20,000 by CDA. Need a motion on that.
I make a motion, we approve the consideration for the Retail Strategies.
No, need a second.
I'll second it.
Second. Got a motion in second. Any further discussion or comments on that? Here none. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
None of us spoke. Thank you. Okay, moving along to number 10, on the agenda, new business, Information Technology Department update, Mr. David Sholky, IT Director.
I'm a little taller for this. Good evening, Chairman and Member of Council. I'm David Sholky, the IT Director for Chester County. Today, I will talk about some of the analytics related to the IT Department, current and ongoing projects, and an upcoming improvement to the county website. So, some of the analytics about the IT Department, we are a staff of two employees. We administer 307 devices and roughly 260 users. These include desktops, laptops, networking hardware, and physical virtual servers. Those servers control pretty much all of our day-to-day operations, relations between cloud and on-premise servers. We also include the Sixth Circuit Solicitor's Office in the three counties, Chester, Fairfield, and Lancaster. Some of the IT groups I'm a part of, one of the most recent one is the National Association of Counties Technology Exchange. This has been a pretty informative one so far. They share policies between all of the states. Pretty much, you see a lot of state and local governments sharing their policies, and I'm starting to put some of those together. And I've already seen the value in this group. The second group is a self-created group between these three counties. I meet quarterly. We've had three meetings with the York County CIO, Chuck Horton, and the Lancaster CIO, Scott Hernandez. I've already seen a lot of value from these meetings, because we really have the same resources, even though these two counties are a lot bigger than us. We use a lot of the same programs. Another big group that I'm a part of, that I'm a very active member in, I've been a member of this group since 2020, and I attend all the monthly sessions. It sleds Critical Infrastructure Cybersecurity Group. And I can't tell you how valuable that's, that group has been. And then, moving on to current projects, one of the big projects we have going on is implementing a new HR and payroll software solution. And if you have questions about any of these, please feel free to stop me as I go through these. This, this program is set to enhance our HR pretty significantly. Right now, we do pretty much everything on paper. And this one pretty much automates a lot of the application tracking, recruiting, and onboarding capabilities by creating workflows. Right now, some of those workflows are split between different programs online, and then really related department has then back to HR. This is gonna make it a single pane of glass for all of this. It's also gonna outsource some of payroll and finance functions. So, it should free up some of the operations to be completed within the finance department. We see the ROI on this even within the first year. So, it's really an upcoming solution for small businesses. So, we spent about a year and a half evaluating different softwares and came to Paycor. Next bullet point I have, I'm performing a print and phone audit. This includes migrating the print services contract to another vendor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that one in a later discussion as well, about how that's gonna roll out. Starting the process to rebuild the county's website. So, we really focused on this this last year, because we found that we have a lot of needs when it comes to internal and online forms. Really gonna spend a lot of time with each department, going over their needs, and then kind of building these microsites to address these needs. Another ongoing project is really patching all of our endpoints and servers to the newest release of Windows. As 10, as 10 depreciates, we've moved to Windows 11 in the upcoming And so, some of the ongoing projects that's been going on, this is kind of in collaboration with our department and county leaders' meetings. We have these quite frequently, and Mr. Hester really's had a vision to look at our contracts. And I've always been driven to look at our contracts. Within the last year, I've decided to take a real deeper look, and recently, we've invoked, you know, some competitive pricing to, to really push negotiations with these contracts. And that's, that's where the Sharp coming up one has been a big one. Let me talk about the Truvista one first, because it's my first bullet point. We really had combined all these Truvista communication bills, Verizon and AT&amp;T. That, that wasn't a huge cost savings from the Verizon and AT&amp;T side, but Truvista one was. I can't remember the exact number this last year, but I think it's set to be about $50,000 to $60,000 in savings that we've saved there. And the next one was Sharp. That one, we're not gonna look at just yet. That's, that's coming up, though. That's February of 2025, February 2025. And that one's gonna be another substantial savings. Next bullet point I have here is kind of refining and improving our AP and finance workflow solutions. This was another, another point where we were moving from paperless to digitizing. I think we've been with the solution a year and a half. We've already seen how much it can improve our requisition to paying invoice workflow. It's really saved us in certain areas. And then, the next bullet point I have is the GIS improvements as they relate to parcels addressing and mapping. GIS is kind of just an upcoming, you know, field. And we really know that our parcels and addressing just need, need work. And I'm working with each department on trying to address those needs. So, moving on to the improvements to the website, I just wanted to, I guess, just kind of give a shout out. This is the committee I put together to evaluate the website. We've had, I think, four or five meetings. And this kind of leads into, you know, my next slide. I just want to at least show the people that were involved in this. So, I'm gonna show you a logo here, and this is kind of what we've put together as far of, as like an administrative logo. Now, this is to be in conjunction with the seal and kind of bring a more contemporary look. And really, I'm just kind of asking your opinion on this, and good grace on it as we move forward. So, that's the administrative logo. Designer created it. She gave us, I think we went through six or seven iterations to come with, to this one. We really like it, and I feel like this is what we're gonna use moving forward. I think they just gave a little black and white. Really like that one, without the color. This is kind of what it looks like if you put it on some stock. Any questions?
Do you need our approval on the logo?
I don't know. Do I?
No, sir. He does not. Not unless there's an objection to it. But really, all the logo, if there's an objection, we can discuss it, or you guys can discuss it, and we'll answer questions. But really, what the logo is, is it's not replacing the seal. But right now, currently, if you went to our website, the only thing you would see was the county seal. A logo is just something, besides that county seal, right now, if you look around, and we have, you know, whether it's department shirts, or people get something to represent Chester when they go places, all we have is the county seal, or we use the state symbol, right? And so, I think they're being creative, just, if you look at a lot of other websites, what you see a lot of times is a seal in a corner, and in the other corner, some type of logo that you can put on shirts, cups, whatever, gadgets, things you give out. But just something that is another way of, kind of like, choose Chester and in Chester for the parks and tourism. So, it doesn't, it's not an official symbol. It's just, just a logo that would be on that website. And they did a good, they really have taken a lot of effort to work through these drawings and designs and to get opinions. So, but we were saving that for council to take a look at.
Any questions or comments? No objections. Thank you, Mr. Sholky, for that.
I'll just, I'll just say we appreciate what you do, that, for, you do a lot of work for a department of two. And so, so much of what you do, we don't understand. But we know, we know it's supportive, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I know you saved the county a lot of money. So, I think you mentioned you saved some on that report, too. So, thank you again.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to B, under number 10, on the agenda, a new animal shelter construction update. Mr. Harold Hayes, Froggy County.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Hope all is well. Today, I can get this right. I wanted to give you an update on the Animal Control Project. As you may know, Animal Control is located on Dawson Drive between the Chester County Detention Center and the Chester Heights Two Apartment Complex. Currently, its location is just on a small parcel of land. It doesn't allow for growth, and it's so compact that it doesn't even allow for the staff to work efficiently. So, we are moving the current location out to Industrial Boulevard, the corner of Industrial Boulevard and Army Road, as this image displays. And in coming up with the site, we then looked at the various designs that could fit the site. We worked with some architects to lay out some designs, but we kept sending them back to the drawing board, because their, their vision and our vision wasn't lining up. Their square footage is much larger than we needed. We're a small town, but we don't need that much square face. So, we went through various layouts, and as you can see, it's just overdesigned. A lot of the problem was, the circulation took up most of the building. So, everything was sort of spread it out. So, we finally got on track, got to understand our vision, and we approved this layout, which is more compact and more efficient for the workers at the site. Now, I wish I could zoom that in, but the way the site works is, you enter off of Industrial Boulevard. Customers will come in, park in front, and then enter the building. As far as workers, they will come in to the site, the same entry, and then travel around the building and park in back, as well as there's an area for the working trucks that actually pick up animals as a Sally Port, in which they park. And then, the way the building is designed, they have immediate access to the medical area before the dogs are literally brought all the way into the, into the building. As far as how it works, I want to bring up the Animal Control Director and let her better explain how you go about adopting the animal at this current facility. Jessica.
I'm a lot shorter. Good afternoon, council and member of chairman, chairman and members of council. So, the flow, if you look at those previous designs that are in your packet, if you notice, there's the same amount of kennels in each one of those designs as there are on the design that we decided on. The biggest issue was not the animals within the shelter with those designs. It was that they felt we needed an under-roof play area for the dogs. This is not something that we currently have at our shelter now, but it is a very big help to have an area for the animals to play, but necessarily not covered. So, we kind of bounced that idea around, and we came up with this flow. So, the intention of that Sally Port there on the back, the intent is for the animal control officers to be able to drive to somewhere to safely offload the animals. Right now, we pull up to the back of the building and pray nothing gets loose. I mean, there's no fencing around where we're dropping off. The idea of this shelter moving forward is to have a safe place in case there is an accident. Also, a dog can climb a kennel. It happens to us all the time. They climb. They're in a confined area. So, the outskirts of this shelter will be completely fenced in. Something else that we're lacking at the shelter we currently have, there's nowhere for the public to safely walk and visibly see the animals within the kennels that they're in. We bring each animal individually up front. After you look at a piece of paper with pretty pictures, and hopefully, you find the one. We have an adoption wing on this side. So, if you see those kennels that are set off to the opposite side of the majority of the kennels, that's what we call our public adoption wing. That will be somewhere where the public can physically walk through, see the dogs in the kennel, see how they react, and physically kind of get a feel for the animal shelter. The flow of this building, you go in through the entrance, you will have your cat adoption right to the front of you. That will be in the main lobby, somewhere for people to hang out and kind of wait to see dogs and attract to the eye. Also, something we do not currently have is a split bathroom. So, this offers a public bathroom and a private bathroom on further back in the facility. The intake medical area, all the way up to the animal kitchen, is gonna be for staff only. Everything else is visible to the public in this layout. The wing where you have the six, six, and six, and then it's divided again, where our intent is to put a divider on the door so that the animals won't cross, see each other, kind of eliminate some of the kennel aggression and things that we've seen now. So, if you guys have any questions about the design, I'm...
How many acres is the total like?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The, as far as the total footprint of the, how many?
We, we actually own 20, I believe it's 20 acres. It goes back around behind those lakes. It's, it's almost a square piece of property. It goes back, if you go, right. So, if you go back on the other side of those lakes that are there, we go past those. There's actually room to build something else behind those two ponds, I should say. And then, probably over to the green space coming up the other side. But some of that, if you look at it, some of it's wetlands as well, so.
So, the part that's gonna be fenced in would be the one outline in yellow, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's the limits of the construction disturbance, that outline in the, in yellow.
Yeah, so that's, that's great.
We've had situations where we were forced to take in livestock. What's the plan for livestock on this?
Large animals.
Large animals.
So, currently, if you guys are familiar, we don't have a place for that right now either. So, we plan to phase that in, in due time. Right now, we outsource to local veterinarian offices and board, is our best bet right now.
I was looking at the back of the, or the front of the building, in that pond down there. Seems like if you fence that in, that'd be a good place to stick some horses.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, too. I just made that comment about large animals, because I know what happens, and I know sometimes there are neglect and things like that, that you have to kind of step in.
It does. And, and something, you know, we work really closely with SLED. We have a dogfight team we work with. We also work with other resources within them. So, if there was ever a large animal confiscate, we would outsource to those divisions to help us move those animals.
Now, do we, do you have truck and trailer and that type of thing to be able to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, up to date, you're good on that.
And that is, you know, we own enough land here that we can, there's room for growth. There's actually, and then the design. I will say that I've sat, I know, I know some people in even maybe the community feel like we've been a little slow on this project. But I think, and, and I'm responsible for stopping the project, if you remember, when I first came, and for good reason. But I think, and I'm responsible for stopping the project, if you remember, when I first came and for good reason. But I think what they've done with Harold coming on board, with Jessie being, now that we've got a defined leader and someone that's knowledgeable and passionate about what she does. I've sat in on these meetings and I've watched the discussions and I've paid close attention to them working through designs. And sometimes architects come in, you know, and they have grand designs, things that maybe Chester can't afford, right? And they've done such a good job of reining that in and making it functional, making it budget conscious. And I think our last design, we all feel pretty comfortable with. And again, there's always little tweaks and changes. One of the things that I will point out about this at Harold, I don't know if you were going to touch on, was the fact that this facility, a large part of this facility will be very modern in that it will be open air or climate controlled, not by mechanical means, but through ventilation means and a more radiant type heat when it's cold. And so that seems to be a trend nationally in facilities like this. And there are studies that actually show that, Jessie, you back me up on this one, that it's better for the animals upon their release as well as opposed to mechanical means of climate control.
That's correct. They, the design team actually submitted an email and if I may, I'll read you that really quickly. They did a shelter recently for Akin. And their veterinarian, after the shelter was finished, stated that in the open flow portion of that facility, the animals were healthier. Most of the animals that we are bringing into these facilities have not been in warm and cuddly homes. They're used to the natural flow there. They're used to the elements as much as we may not like that. So this kind of brings us a slow process into bringing them into the development of a shelter. This is a really, I think this is going to be a great idea moving forward. Animals regulate temperature through their feet. They don't sweat. That's not what happens. So this is a way that we can control that capacity. And they also, some of the studies we've looked into says that an animal should get fresh air every six minutes. Every one of the kennels in this new design, except for your quarantine kennels, get outside air every day as much as they want. It's a guillotine. They can come in and they can go out.
These are walls and big ventilation windows that'll actually open, turn. It's really unique with industrial fans that push air and in radiant heat, obviously for the winter. So very unique. I think they've done a fantastic job with where they are. I assume you guys are going to talk timelines a little bit as well.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So it's my impression that before you got here, the first, like you were stating, the first plan was more than what Chester needed, correct? And you guys were instrumental in downsizing and making it into what we want. So my question is, going forward, Mr. Hayes, you do have the ability with the consent of the administrator to do preliminary designs before we start taking things to Alliance and getting these big outrageous plans? Can you do preliminary design so that our, the process of us completing projects in Chester won't take this long and we won't run into this problem again? Can you, do you have the ability to do that?
Yes, I do. And that's what our goal is to do is once we get past some of these projects that we already have, companies like Alliance involved in, we would then take over, like, for example, this portion of the design. This is a schematic design as well as design development. I have the ability to take a project from schematic design, design development. So instead of starting from two steps back, we'll start two steps forward in these projects moving forward. And then we'll be, like, for example, with the probate relocation as well as the.
Westchester.
Yeah, in the Westchester Fire Department, we will give firms, architectural firms, engineering firms, we'll give them what exactly what we want. And then we'll let their professionalism and their expertise come in and kind of sort of redefine it. But they won't be starting from scratch. We'll give them a level of development that brings the drawings to design development.
I think that's exactly what we need. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Got to your point. We're able to, at that point, go out and, because it's professional services, Harold has the ability to go work with several different architecture or engineering firms, receive quotes from them, find the ones that fit the right size of the project as well. And then at that point, we can do an RFQ process where we don't sealed bids so much. But we have contractors that have met qualifications. And we can set them for, you know, maybe certain contractors are a million and under projects. Some are, you know, multi-million dollar projects. And so then we can choose from those, those that have submitted RFQs and have met those qualifications. And we can choose ours, again, helps the process move faster and more efficiently.
And it'd be also cheaper as well.
Yeah. What's the, for us, capacity and increasing the size of this over the coming years for us? I know if we get more people in here, we're going to have more pets. Is this designed to last for several years or ten years?
Ability for growth, he's asking.
We do, we do have, this building, as you look at the site, right now, we have sixty kennels, I want to say. But as you look at this, the site, let me go. If you look at the site plan, you can see where there is an opportunity for growth, which was a problem with the old site and the old building. And with that growth, it allowed the staff to operate more efficiently. So, yeah, we do.
So it looks like you could probably add on to the, I guess, I don't know, that would be your left or my left, where the adoption kennels are. Looks like you could add on more kennels on that side if you had to.
Yes, we could. Yes, we could. But also keep in mind the topography. Some of that land is, you know, it looks flat now, but some of that land does slope. So there will be some, some design challenges on certain areas of the building that we can grow, grow out. So like if you look down below, you see that sort of rectangular area. That's a storm basin. So we could, so that portion of the building, everything is sort of sloping towards that area so that water runoff goes there as opposed to just puddle around the building. But there is a lot of room to grow in this, in this current design and layout and on this site.
So to follow up on that, that was kind of along the lines of my questions as well. So when you look at the schematic there, where the kennels are, you could, you could extend that hall, that longer?
Correct, correct. Where that medical, medical kennels are, we can extend there. We could even add kennels to the right of the long, a long bank of kennels. We could add a few more kennels there as well.
So my question was about how did y'all come about determining how many kennels you would need? How, how does this capacity compare to what you're currently using? I know in the past, there's been a large intake at times of animals from the sheriff's department.
It was sort of based off what we have already and then knowing, then she knows what we need. I'll let you speak to that.
So the biggest thing for the last two years, we've been tracking our numbers. We have, in the last two years, not gone above seventy-nine animals. Now, something we also have been working with and I would like for you guys to know is EMS has a plan if there was ever an emergency. And what do you do with the community animals? Every kennel that we have can be split into two. So in this design layout, you drop those guillotine doors, it automatically becomes two separate kennels. So if for any reason there was a need to updo those kennels, we could split every single one of these in half.
And that automatically doubles the capacity?
What about cat capacity? That's been a problem for me.
So it has been. As far as holding feral cats, we're still not there yet. But we are taking, the plan is to take the Connex container that we have only cats in now. That's the only place we have for cats. We're going to use that as a cat quarantine, just to keep the ventilation separated cats or they carry a lot of disease up respiratory. The best thing to do is keep them out of the ventilation of the other animals. Since we already have that building, we're going to put it to the back where it's not noticeable by the public. But then right as soon as you walk into the front door, we will now display our cats for adoption. So there will be more options for that too.
Good. Let me ask you one question. I don't have any issues with this whatsoever. But what's the bottom line price? Because we're going to be, we could be into January before we have a bid price. How much is how much?
We, we have three point three million dollars that was set aside for this project total. And so that is, we have actually had already a preliminary meeting around those costs. And again, that's where they're finding every option to make sure that we don't end up with a design that's, you know, half a million dollars over what our budget is for this building. And so I think they're doing a, while we want to build for the future, we also don't want to overbuild it as well. And I, what I want to say about, I have to say this with Jessie. I read her weekly reports. All directors give me a weekly report. And Jessie's, I watch the numbers on. And there's weeks now where Jessie is putting out as many or more animals than she's taken in. That's never happened. It's always been getting behind, getting behind. What do we do with these animals? Try to get them out in adoption and, or with a rescue, I'm sorry. And, but they're actually, their numbers, if you guys saw them, she's trying to get those numbers down to where we don't have as many, right?
So one more question. What kind of building is this? Is this all metal building? Is it, is this block building? What is it?
So my next slide, that's sort of where we at now. Trying to understand what materials is best to use, that's the most economical. We're looking at that, we're studying that currently. Like I said, we're in design development. So we're looking at that currently and as well as we're looking at the type of roofs, what type of roof form is best for this design? Because as Brian spoke earlier, we're looking to have unconditioned space for the kennels. There's no necessary, not a reason to have dogs with, or cats or whatever we're sheltering to allow them to have AC. That reduces the mechanical cost. And these dogs are coming from the outside already. So they know how to, when they're not in a kennel, they're just roaming the streets. They know how to stay warm and stay cool as well. So we will provide, you know, the shelter will keep them dry. But then there's not necessarily a need to provide AC for those animals. But in the wintertime, they will, we will have some sort of unit that kind of radiates a little heat that will help keep the dogs and everything warm.
So.
But that's also can be a reflection of the type of material we use. So let's say, for example, we use block walls. On a good sunny day in the wintertime, those block walls will heat up, which will then heat up the floor. And that'll help, that radiant energy will help keep the dogs warm.
So you, on your, I might be moving ahead, but on your slide, you're saying that you, you should know about which materials and everything you're going to be using on the construction documents by June the twenty-fourth?
Yes, yes. Right. And so we want to, in that, we want to get that actually done towards the beginning of June and then get cost evaluation for some contractor to see how much this is really going to cost us. And then should it be over the budget, we do have the ability to kind of subtract things. Because I think we went with our, the most we wanted, you know, our wishlist. And so we do have a flexibility to kind of reduce some of the kennels if necessary, which would reduce the cost.
We, we have the ability that if, depending on where the initial cost opinions come in, based on materials as well, that we can leave a room open, we can build the room, leave it open and add that to it. So, but again, I think we won't put the cart before the horse with this. We have what money we have. We also have other funds we could pull from. But we'd obviously come to council if we, and show council the cost on this project if we were going to overrun the current budget or ask to overrun. But I think the materials, Mr. Wilson, to your point, most of these are metal type buildings with some type of block walls in them as well. But the metal comes in on the ends where the ventilation walls are. They're part, part concrete, part metal where it all turns and moves and sometimes it's panel that, that actually will do rotate like that for the air to flow through. So, you know, this, while we want the building to look nice and to fit our community, we want it to be functional, but it'll also be buffered and it won't be sitting on the main road as well.
Would you be comfortable in placing a date for the public on when the construction will be over and the shelter will open?
We are looking to have a pre, pre-construction meeting in January. And then once that meeting happens, probably about eight to ten months after that, we should be complete.
Two thousand twenty-five sometime.
Yeah, I would say, correct.
Okay.
One thing about it, I feel a lot better seeing a line schedule and the construction schedule and something to hold us all, your department as well as us, all accountable, something that we can look at and timeline here that, you know, shows what, what's going on. And if someone asks questions, we can kind of tell them where we are or where we're supposed to be at a certain time. So I appreciate you breaking it down for us and letting us know, you know, how long this stuff takes and where, where you expect to be at a certain date and time. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Hayes and ma'am for that. I know that's music to a lot of people's ears. I know those of us that have been on council a while, about every council meeting that we would have, we'd have a group up here concerned about the animal shelter and this type of thing. So I think this is going to be a great improvement and something that Chester County can be proud of. And I know you all enjoy working in. So thank y'all for your hard work on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All righty. Moving right along, number eleven, we have no boards and commissions. And moving right along into executive session. I'll need a motion on that to go into executive session to get legal advice concerning economic development for solar project. And also to discuss the negotiation incident to propose contractual agreements and propose sale or purchase of property and the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims and utility. Motion on that.
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion to second. All in favor?